Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November School Board meeting. And fortunately, we didn't have any inclement weather or we would've had it canceled tonight. So I'm sure everyone is equally as excited as I am to be here on a cold evening on Tuesday. Ford, you've had your agenda now. Any questions, comments, concerns? Dr. Rollins, any corrections or changes?
The agenda would stand as presented, Mr. President.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Luttrell and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the minute, or the agenda for tonight's board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ford, you've also had the minutes of the previous meeting. Any comments, questions, or corrections to the minutes?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the minutes of the previous board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is the time of the meeting where we would welcome any patron comments, concerns, or questions. Just understand that we cannot take any action on them tonight, but we would be happy to hear from you. Just come to the podium, tell us who you are, state your question, concern, or comment to the board, and we'd love to hear from you. Since there are none, Dr. Rollins?
Ford, it's a pleasure for me to invite Elijah Landon Edwards to the microphone. This is a wonderful young man. I've gotten to meet him, say hello to him a number of times. He's here from the Archer Learning Center this evening. Elijah, we're very glad to have you here. Elijah will lead us in the pledge and then I'll give you some more information about
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Elijah, we are very pleased to have you here today. And I know your principal certainly is as well.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, Dr. Rollins, for introducing me and thanks for the school board to give me the opportunity to talk to y'all. I've been a student in Springdale my entire life and thank y'all for the opportunities y'all have given me. The reason I ended up at Archer Learning Center is because my father passed away and I didn't care about going to school. So Archer gave me a reason and showed me that people cared for me and cared for my future. There are people that show me I can succeed and I will succeed. After graduation, I plan to go to college and fish on a fishing team. My top choice right now is Arkansas Tech University. The reason I chose that is because it's close to home. I love Lake Darnell in Russellville and they have a great fishing team. My sophomore year, I won Angler of the Year in a fishing team trail called Northwest Arkansas Young Guns. This year, I'm fishing an Arkansas straight tail called, or Arkansas State Trail called Arkansas Youth Anglers. I fished the tournament, or I fished a tournament roughly a month and a half ago and I blew my motor and got disqualified. So I had to put the boat on the trailer and come home and it was terrible, but. Three, about three weeks ago, I fished another tournament and I came in first place in it. So that was awesome. That put me in top three for Angler of the Year right now in the state. So I have another tournament next weekend at Lake Bull Shoals and hopefully I can place top three in it and that'll put me in first for Angler of the Year. Thank y'all for letting me talk. If y'all have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Well, do tell us about the Men of Honor program at Archer.
Oh, yes. I forgot to mention that. So I am in a Men of Honor program at Archer Learning Center and what we do is we go and just do community work and we help out with anyone that needs help. Last weekend, I was actually fishing, so I didn't get to make it, but hopefully I get to make it to the next one. I was fishing a tournament, but they did a tacos-for-life deal where they just packed food and sent food off and it was a great deal and hopefully I'll be able to make the next one.
So being from Russellville-
Yes, sir.
And an Arkansas Tech graduate, I think you're making a great choice.
Well, thank you, thank you. That's where my uncle went.
And I do have a lot of contacts for you for Lake Darnell and maybe even the job at Mass Mafia Tackle. It's our fishing shop there in Russellville.
That'd be awesome. Yes, sir.
You have a lot of opportunities there.
Yes, sir. Well, thank y'all. I appreciate it.
Okay, so I've known Landon a long, long time and I've never seen anybody fish more and harder than he did growing up. And you, you know, just, I know you've had ups and downs in life and you have done a great job just for, when you came up and introduced yourself to me the other day at the ALE dedication, I was so excited to see you. It's been quite some time. So it's neat that you're here and thank you for sharing your story. Will you remind everybody here, which schools in Springdale have you attended over the years?
I went to Young, then I went to Shaw, then I went to Hellstern, then I went to Central, and then I went to Harvard.
So you've seen the inside of a few school buildings in Springdale.
Oh, yes, sir. Mr. Luttrell, that's the man right there. I love that guy.
But anyway, no, it's great to see you and we're certainly proud of you and I know your grandparents are and they've done a lot and other people in your family to help you along the way, so.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Good job.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here.
Keep fishing. Thank you. I'm going to.
Hey, Dr. Rollins, I forgot, yesterday being Veterans Day, I would like to ask if there's any veterans or current active-duty military service personnel in here tonight. Just like to recognize you guys and give you a thanks for your service and.
Well, I know we just got our meeting started, but I'm gonna ask everybody in the audience to do something special. Will you please stand and with your applause, help us welcome to the podium the Arkansas Teacher of the Year, Mr. Joel Luckington. Joel, we're so glad to have you and I think you know how proud everybody in the room is of you. And we look forward to the service you'll provide to the kids of the state and really to the assistance that you'll give to policymakers of the state. Thank you for all you've done already and what you will do.
Well, thank you. It is truly an honor to get to represent Springdale. Last, what was that, at the end of the school year, being here as the Lakeside Building Representative for the Teacher of the Year, I really thought I'd go sit down and that'd be the end of it. And then as this process kept going and here we are and it's made it to this, to get to represent the state of Arkansas. And I think it truly is just a testament to the district because it, no one person does great things by themselves. It's a support team and it really is everyone involved and I think we have that here in Springdale. Everywhere from the school board to the district administrators to the teachers and staff, it's everybody working together to serve students and that's what we do really well here in Springdale. You know, getting to do this, I don't really know what's coming. Trying to figure that out, but official duties start July 1st, so next year, take a year and that will be the job. Hopefully, get to come back and you'll welcome, welcome me back and I'd love a job the following year. We'll see. Okay, thanks. You know, but I'm really excited to be a learner through this process and to get to see what, you know, there's great things happening across the state. There's things that can definitely be improved. That's the same here. We can always get better. And so being able to bring some of those things back through these experiences and some of these trips to get to go on and unique opportunities. But, you know, I think the thing I'm most excited about is taking the message of what I truly think the Springdale School District is all about and that is, we have great curriculum, we have great facilities, and great resources here in the district. But at the heart of what we do, people change people and it is about relationships and that is what I think our district is so, so good at, is that teachers and staff, administrators pour into students and invest in students relationally and that is what fosters learning at the highest levels. And so hopefully, get to take that with me as we go through this process and we'll see what it's all about and hopefully get to come tell you about it, so. Yep. Y'all have any questions or anything?
We're good.
We're good. All right. Thanks, y'all.
Mr. Ford, will you come down with Ms. Shaw and I'm gonna ask you to introduce Anna in a very personal way. Anna Shaw, please come down as well. A national award winner, a presidential award winner in the teaching of math and science. Such a wonderful recognition as well. Sarah, I know y'all work hand and glove and I know she would treasure your introduction tonight.
Thanks, Dr. Rollins, and thank you for letting us be here this evening. It's just my honor to get to work with dedicated professionals who are at the top of their game, who are committed to kids, who have a heart for kids, who are continuous learners and who just consistently bring great ideas, great strategies, both to the table to help others and also to their classroom. When you go into Anna Shaw's classroom, you will see kids engaged in math. They love math in her classroom and it's because she makes it fun to them. She makes it challenge, it's certainly challenging, but her, it's served up in a way that is, that is palatable to sixth and seventh graders. And I couldn't be more pleased to introduce Anna Shaw as the Arkansas Presidential Award Winner for Math this year. And so, please help me welcome her.
Thank you. Thank you very much and thank you, Sarah. That was very sweet. I just kind of want to reiterate what Joel said in that it's, this honor is more of a testament to Springdale as a whole than just to me and my teaching because the students here, the parents here, the administration, the board, the organization as a whole really does just prepare you for excellence. And so I just want to thank everyone here tonight for the opportunities I've had as a Springdale teacher and I just look forward to growing here and staying here and loving my Springdale kids and teaching them well. And thank you for letting me do that and preparing me and supporting me in that.
Dr. Smith, if you would, come forward and I know she has many special recognitions to make the seat.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins, members of the board. So I also want to say thank you for a wonderful work session today and for pushing our thinking and making us better at what we do. So the curriculum instruction team has about seven items on the agenda and as you know, we start with why. Our focus is on everything we do is why and our collective why is teach them all and all means all. I found this saying and I think it kind of talks a lot about our first group coming forward, not necessarily in the education realm, but it says, "Your why is what gets you out, connecting, contributing with people in the world and in service." And so I think that speaks volumes to the first group we're having. I never thought I'd be standing in front of you talking about a group of people that went to Dubai, but I'm very excited to introduce, back from Dubai, a trip of a lifetime, I'm sure. I'm gonna introduce Abby Herrera and she's gonna come forward and talk about the amazing trip that they had.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, board and to all present. So today, we're here to talk to you, give you a little bit of a recap of our trip to Dubai. So of course, we'd like to start off first and foremost with thanking our supporters and everyone who helped us get to Dubai. So here you can see the different companies and individuals in our community who have supported us in our journey to Dubai and that entire effort as well. So we just want to show our gratitude and of course, to the school board for your tremendous support and allowing us to have this opportunity in our own education. So thank you. So one thing we wanted to talk about, actually, I don't think we formally discussed to the school board about our trip to Washington DC before we went to Dubai. So we actually made a connection with Congressman Womack and he invited us to go on a trip to Washington DC, explore our nation's capital, but also meet with some of our delegation from Arkansas. So there's a picture we took with him right in front of the Capitol. As you can see, it's currently under construction. In the top, you'll see the picture from us at the White House right in front of the presidential seal. And then on the other side of the screen, you'll see a picture of us with Senator Bozeman. We also got to visit him. And one other thing that was really special to us is our article about our accomplishments being Team USA and representing the United States actually made it into the Congressional Record thanks to Senator Bozeman. So we have in very nice paper showing how we were put in the Congressional Record forever for our accomplishments in robotics. So it's very exciting. So that was our trip to Washington DC. And now I just want to talk about our hectic journey to Dubai. So it didn't happen very simply. You'll see on the top left, that's us getting on the charter bus, leaving SOI at about two in the morning that day and we made the drive down to Dallas. And when we got to Dallas, we actually waited there for seven hours because our plane had mechanical failures, so we weren't able to get on our flight directly from Dallas to Dubai. So after those seven hours, they decided that they're gonna drive us to Houston, which was four and a half hours away. So then we got on a bus to Houston and then we finally flew out from Houston to Dubai. So it was a lot more hectic than we imagined it would be, but we were very pleased. When we touched ground in Dubai, we were greeted with media and you can see there, we were actually doing some videos and they asked us to do some cool chants, you know, the media for the competitions. We're very excited. I don't know if you can tell, but we were very exhausted in that picture. We were not expecting to get there that late in the evening, but we're thankful for the whole experience, so. One thing we'd all, we'd also like to share with you guys were, the facilities were amazing in Dubai. As you can see, very nice playing fields, nicer than anything we've seen at a competition here in the US. And so what you're seeing on top are the playing fields that were empty, that was the first day. And at the bottom, you'll see, this was actually like, this was half of the pits. So there were 191 countries and this is just one room of the pits of all the countries represented. So yeah, those are the pits. And in the middle, you'll see we had a little like robot doctor station because there were a lot of damages to robots and mechanical failures during the trip. So here are just some pictures of us interacting with teams. In the top left, you'll see, I don't know if you can see it, but we're standing in front of the skyline of downtown Dubai and you can probably see the Burj Khalifa in the background, which is actually the tallest man-made building in the world. So even though we didn't get to do as much sightseeing as we wanted to, we drove by it on our way to the opening ceremony. So we got to see it, but not really interact with it. And then in the bottom left, you'll actually see, there's Bryant and one of our coaches with Team Syria, who we actually mentored before the competition. So we had video called with them in preparation for the event and we finally got to meet them. The same in the top right with Team Eritrea, who we've been in contact with for a couple months before the competition. We were helping them with some phone issues there, it looks like. And then in the bottom right, you actually see us with one of our ambassadors there who helped us around at the event, Saif. So he got to teach us a lot about the culture, the Emirati culture, and we got to ask him the questions we didn't really want to ask everyone else. So he was very nice. We appreciated him. And of course, the, one of the most important parts of the whole thing was the actual competition part. So that big picture right there is the most amazing schedule our team has ever seen. You'll see that we were partnered with teams from all around the world, so we were very excited. We got to play nine qualification matches with a random group of teams and we also got visited by two different judging panels. So you'll see those on the pictures on the left. So that's our team talking to them about robot. They asked us about fundraising, our community outreach, things that we usually get asked about at regular tournaments. We got an opportunity to talk about there. So that was very exciting. And here, it's another picture of us interacting with teams. I know Team Vietnam is in the bottom left and then we were with Japan for our very last qualification match, so we took a nice picture with them. And yeah, it was all very fun. I think one, definitely one of the best parts of the entire trip was just getting to meet kids our age from all around the world. And now that we're home, you know, even though we're proud of Arkansas, I want to see so much more. So it was amazing. These are pictures from the opening ceremony, which is by far the best ceremony we've ever been to in our entire lives. There was like an entire water show. It was like Cirque du Soleil. We got a Free Will I Am concert while we were there. And it also included the Parade of Nations and that's the United States' official picture from the Parade of Nations, so we got to hold our flags there. And thankfully, Dillard's actually dressed us for this opening ceremony all for free. So we also got some really nice suits for the event for free. So that's there. And we also got to speak to some dignitaries at the event as well. So who you're seeing in the top left is actually, I forgot his name, but he's an important talk show host in the UAE that everyone was freaking out about, but we had no idea who he was. But he was, he was a big deal. In the bottom left, you'll see, since I was the Team USA spokesperson, I did a lot of interviews on behalf of the United States. And there, we were talking with the Office of the UAE Ambassador to the United States. And we're gonna show you a video that they, that they created for us. In the top right, you'll see, we're with Dean Kamen, who is the founder of FIRST, which is the program that we compete in for robotics. And we're also speaking to the UAE Ambassador to the United States. So it was amazing meeting, meeting him. He sent us a video before we left for the event, so we were very excited to meet him in person. He was extremely kind to us as well. And then in the bottom right, you'll actually see, we're with Mr. Rick Perry, the Secretary of Energy for the United States. So we're very excited to meet him as well. And here's just a match video. I don't think we're gonna show all of it, just so you guys could see, there were three, there were two alliances and each had three teams. So it's bigger than the regular alliances we see at competitions, but as you can see, it's pretty amazing looking at all the different countries that are at the bottom of that screen. So this was the best match that we played and this was also our final qualification match. And definitely, we think we could have performed better on the robot side. We did not make it to the elimination rounds, but you know, now we're taking that all in and hoping to improve it for this next season that's coming up.
This award is the Katherine Johnson Award for Engineering Documentation. This is awarded to teams that are able to effectively demonstrate how they built their robot through an engineering notebook, which covers the journey they took with their robot from initial planning, designs, and prototypes through to the final design. Our bronze medal for the Katherine Johnson Award for Engineering Documentation goes to
As soon as you can see, the entire award ceremony was very Olympic style. We had bronze, silver, and gold for every award and they had very dramatic music playing as well, so this one takes a little bit longer.
Our silver medal for the Katherine Johnson Award for Engineering Documentation goes to
And it may just be my American mindset, but I think we could have won gold. Okay? We, we, gold medal went to Team UAE, which was the host team, so it's gold in my heart. It's golden.
And the gold medal goes to hometown team, Team UAE.
Right, yeah. Megan and Sarah here, they're the ones who worked on the notebook. You guys have seen it with your own eyes. I think it was the best in the world. It's just us. It's just us.
Second best in the world isn't too bad.
I agree. It's okay. And this is actually the video the Office of the UAE Ambassador made.
Anytime they hear someone telling them, "This is impossible," or "This can't be done," or "You can't do this," don't listen. Look to the future and don't let anything stand in your way.
I think there are a lot of problems in the world today that can be solved, you know, by engineers.
I think the best thing that first did to us is it brought people from all different cultures to interact with us.
So this afternoon, in our final match of the day, we're partnered with UAE in Lithuania.
There are 193 teams here today in Dubai. These kids have to learn how to cooperate and solve problems together. Inventing is about imagination, courage, the ability to fail, and plow through.
You know, even though we have different accents and we're from different regions of the world, our passion for STEM is what brought us together.
So that's all we have for you guys today. Do you guys have any questions, comments, concerns?
What, you mentioned earlier you were teamed up or you were in a picture with Eritrea?
Eritrea, yes.
Where is that? What is that?
They're, um, south of, north of Ethiopia? Northeast Africa.
But they're actually, they're actually based out of Canada because they're refugees because the Eritrean government is kind of.
A mess right now.
Yeah, a mess. And so they're actually refugees and live in Canada. They came, they actually attempted to come to the United States, but they were denied entry and so they ended up fleeing to Canada, so that's where they're based.
And one thing we saw with a lot of the teams were, a lot of their countries were facing humanitarian and, you know, government crises, but you know, it didn't stop them from having an amazing time and being extremely appreciative that they were there. So it was amazing.
What was your biggest surprise or takeaway from your trip?
I don't know. I think the biggest surprise for me at least was the delay in the flight. That was my biggest surprise.
I think my biggest surprise was, you know, even though, you know, we're from Springdale, Arkansas, and we know the United States is a great country, just knowing, like, I didn't know a lot of the teams that were even there even existed, right? So just the fact that we were put in a setting with people from all around the world, not only did it expand, you know, our knowledge of the world, but also like our cultural, you know, knowledge as well, which I really appreciated throughout the entire event.
Yeah, I think my perspective of the world changed because whenever you get almost every country in the world gathered together, it feels really big, but the fact that we're all united for one goal was really like reassuring almost to me.
Yeah, definitely.
So how was the food?
So we ate buffet-style for like every meal, so it was very, very nice. It was, it was good. One thing we realized was that they don't really make chicken nuggets like we do here, especially with Tyson. They taste a little bit different. So Western food does not taste the same. That's all we could say.
We were, our hotel was attached to a mall, without a doubt the nicest mall I've ever been to.
Absolutely.
But mall, but the restaurant options were not that different. I ate at Cheesecake Factory one night. I ate at KFC. So you could, you, the UAE is such an international place. What did they say, over, people from over 200 countries live in Dubai? So you can find whatever you want to eat.
Get anything. Absolutely.
How expensive was it? I mean, just out and around?
When all the bills are paid and if you count the things that were donated, probably about 40 to 45 bucks.
Yes.
And we raised it all. We've never, the, we, so for the trip to Dubai and our upcoming season, we've raised a little bit over $60,000. And I would say most years. I would say most years at this point, we've raised about six. So being Team USA, like, we didn't, we won the big tournament April, which you guys heard about only a year ago again. Nothing changed between that and when we were then Team USA. Like, we didn't do anything else beyond winning that tournament in Houston last year, but just being able to call ourselves Team USA opened doors that have never been opened before. So we really appreciate the support that we've gotten from Springdale, from other places in Arkansas like Dillard's, the Northwest Arkansas Council was incredibly supportive. The school district was incredibly supportive and the Dubai Future Foundation comped our plaintiffs. You know, so it was.
Yes, we're just very grateful, especially for, you know, Ms. Bortz too. She let us miss a lot of school for our trip to Washington and trip to Dubai, so very thankful. So thank you, guys.
Who do you have coming up who can take over this notebook? Because I gotta tell you, that was the thing I was the most impressed with when we were there.
That's what we're worrying about right now. So one thing to be perfectly honest with the board is, you know, we have very high standards for ourselves and because- standards for ourselves, and because of this trip to Dubai, we actually fallen a little bit behind on our regular season. So, you know, even though it was an amazing experience, we were kind of hoping this would be the closing of the book for this, so we can concentrate 100% on our last year as a team, because we're all seniors. So this is going to be our last official robotic season, but we don't know who's going to take over yet.
When does your season start? Like, what's your first competition?
First competition...
January 11th is our first competition.
Where is it at?
It's in Hot Springs.
But there'll be one in...
Number two is Springdale.
Springdale, yes. We'll send you guys a schedule, so you guys can see us.
You know you're not going to be able to compare those to what you just did in Dubai, right?
No.
Your standards might have changed a little bit.
Your bar has changed.
Yeah, yes, it has. So thank you, guys, very much for all your support.
I, I just want to say something real quick. I, I've known Richard quite a while, too, and between what he and Chase have done, I mean, I think I remember the first time, six years ago, when he was trying to explain robotics to me. It took me six years to kind of figure out what he was explaining, but, but your commitment and enthusiasm to fundraise or to nurture these kids and lead out of your own time is remarkable, what you and Dr. Rainwater have done, and thank you very, very, very much.
It's our honor.
It's great work, so the fruits of your labor.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Thank you so much.
So Abby, root negative one means imaginary. You guys are definitely not that.
No, we're not.
I always wondered what that meant. What does it mean?
Square root of negative one is an imaginary number. Just, boy, a little bit of information there. Yeah, that's the trivia for this evening. Item number two, Ms. Ellen Watts was going to come forward today, but she had an emergency and wasn't able to, but she asked me to read this to the board. This is in regards to the startup, some, some money that she received for a startup garden. She said, "Springdale High School self-contained classes started the school garden as a job skills work program to help students with disabilities transition into the workforce. Students learn skills while working through a series of jobs, including garden manager, watering specialist, groundskeeper, and supply technician. Each job requires students to learn motor skills, administrative, and critical thinking skills, and more. As the garden progresses, they hope to develop an SHS farmer's market where students can learn and practice many skills by selling produce and flowers. They are working closely with the school's E S program to turn the garden into an outdoor classroom where all students in the school, including special education and general education, can have access. In the spring, the governor is set to visit the garden with the Department of Agriculture's education liaison. The school garden will also be featured in the Farm Credit Magazine in an article dedicated to the importance of agriculture in schools." So she wasn't able to be here, but some exciting news, and I'm sure she'll have some additional news following the, and you can see right here, this was a mock-up that she sent in regards to what the startup garden will look like. So we're excited about that, wish she could be here this evening.
Is it going to be in the, in between the, those two wings?
I'm not exactly sure where that's going to be. Yeah, yeah, so more to come. I'm sure there's going to be some groundwork that will have to be laid for that, because that's quite an extensive garden.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, at this time, I would like Ms. Priest to come forward. She included me in part of, before they left, she allowed me to be a part of this team a little bit in some of the stuff they were doing, so I was so excited. She was sending me links, and I was watching these ceremonies as they were going, so it's quite an honor for them to share some of their exciting news. I'm going to let her share all the exciting news about that, so if you guys want to come forward.
We have two things that we want to talk about this evening. The first thing that Dr. Smith talked about being involved with, I involved lots of people in preparing two of our students who, we reported to you guys back in August, that we had two national proficiency finalists that were then invited to national convention because of their quality SAEs, which are their projects that they work on at home. They were invited to be interviewed at national convention. So we had from, we found that out in August, and then we went and competed on Halloween. They were interviewed. And so we had three months to prepare these two young people for being interviewed and being able to talk. And I wish I had videoed their first in August with Dr. Smith, and then their last, when I took them to, in front, and put them in front of a panel of 10 people at Tyson. And they hit them really hard with some really hard questions, but they were able to handle it, and, and were very articulate when that, and Brayden came offstage. Brayden was announced, Brayden Ingram was announced the national winner, so he won the entire competition. And a radio station grabbed him and took him away from us and interviewed him, and that interview, just the, the excitement in his voice was worth all the time and effort put into that, plus his $1,000 cash that he gets to take home. Amanda Anthony was also a national finalist. She had quite the stressful day on Halloween. She competed starting at 7:00 AM until about 2:00 PM in the National Poultry Competition, and I was sitting there with car on running, in the getaway car, to transport her from the Indiana Fairgrounds to downtown Convention Center to get her to her interview. So she had quite a stressful day. She was so, she's top four in the nation in her proficiency, and second, or third high individual in the nation in her poultry competition. So she was kind of beating herself up for that, and I told her, "It's not bad for a day." So she came home with $1,500. Anyway, she, she won some cash, too. And I do want them to have an opportunity to speak to you, but I'm, I'm very proud of all of these, these young people, but the, the cool story about the poultry team is that they, they're all freshmen in college now, two of them at the U of A majoring in poultry science, but they came to me as sophomores in high school and decided that they wanted to be on the poultry judging team. And so we, their sophomore year, there were about 15 kids trying to be the top four spots, and they made the top, these four, made the top four spots. They went, their sophomore year, competed at state and got third. Then they came back. They didn't quit. And so then they all worked together again, trying to be the top four spots their junior year, go to state, and we, we were second by five points. Lincoln, or no, Farmington, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to say that school. They beat us by five points. So they second place. So again, junior year, now it's their senior year, and they came back. And so many people commended them when we were going to contests and stuff, getting ready for state contests their senior year. So many people were like, "Wow, they're back. We can't believe they didn't give up." Most, most kids would have quit. Mr. Mason, who retired here teaching, he pulled them aside and said, "I can't believe you didn't quit. Like, you still, you still, you're still trying." So then we finally win state contest their senior year. We won by two points, right? Seven, anyway, it was close. It's close. Anyway, and so then we go to national competition, and we were second in the nation in poultry judging. And they, Amanda won $1,000. Kada was sixth high individual. She, is Kada down here? She won $900. But I wanted each of them just to kind of tell you the highlight of their time, and especially the poultry girls. Brayden is still with me. He's got one more year, so he's got some more journeys with me, but if I'll let them talk now.
I started with FFA. I was head, or head set on getting equine judging, and I had been since pretty much I came out of the womb. I was going to do equine judging when I got in high school. And that didn't work out, so Ms. Priest was like, "Okay, how about poultry judging? We have a spot, just try it." And I did. Made the top four, and then part of these lovely girls now. But poultry judging has definitely made my whole FFA career everything. I'm majoring in poultry, poultry science now because of it. So FFA's had a huge impact on my life.
All right. I think we've all done our separate things within FFA. I think, you know, Amanda did her national proficiency, and I think I did meats judging ninth grade, and everybody else has done their fair share. But poultry judging, I think for us four, like, we all stuck together through these three years, and we've seen the highs and the lows, and we've cried together and we laughed together, and we have so many good memories in the car and on bus rides, and Ms. Priest being with us, and I think we've made the best relationships. And we call ourselves the poultry girls, because we just, we never broke up, and we've always been together. And I'm really proud to be a part of this team. And I don't know about them, but just being with them and having the same group of girls throughout the last four years has been the best part of FFA in my high school career ever. So thank you, Ms. Priest, for getting us together and everything. Yeah.
My turn, boys. Um, I guess, I don't really know. I guess I'm going to say what FFA is to me. So before I joined FFA, I guess you could say that I didn't really have ambition, you know? That's sad to say, but it's true. I didn't really want to do anything with my life. I was like, "I'll just, you know, pass along. I'll skim by, you know, I'll do whatever it takes, but I'm not going to try hard." That's sad, again. But that's what I wanted to do. But Ms. Priest literally dedicates her life to us, like, I'm talking like 8:00 at night every single night, wake up, wakes up in the morning, she dedicates her whole life to us. You know, she buys us lunch, she buys us snacks, she gives us the extra study materials. She doesn't have a dog, because she wouldn't take care of it, because she dedicates her life to us. So she pushes me, and she pushed me to be on this team and to keep trying and to keep going, and she made me want to have a life in agriculture. I always wanted to, but I just never thought I could, and she made me believe that I can, and that I'm, you know, I'm strong enough, I'm smart enough, I can do it, and I can have a future. So I guess FFA means to me like hope and friendship, and just like knowing that. I don't even know. No, I'm not getting, I had to swallow my spit. But yeah, I guess that's what FFA means to me, just trying and future, and I don't know. I just want to thank Ms. Priest, because without her, we wouldn't be here. She pushes us to do our best, and I don't know any other teacher like her, so thanks for not letting me be a deadbeat. Love you.
Like my other teammate said, FFA is just a really amazing organization. We had an amazing teacher. I never really had a farming or like a country background, so it was kind of surprising to my parents, I think, that I went into FFA, Future Farmers of America, but it's so much more than just like farming, from what I've learned. That's why I'm going to the U of A, majoring in poultry science with Amanda, that there's just so much more to agriculture, and it's just like about feeding people. But being on the poultry team and meeting these ladies and having all these experiences, it was just really amazing, so.
Hi, y'all. My project for my SAE, my family owns a butcher shop, War Eagle Processing, in Hinesville. I've worked there since 2016. So just working there, Ms. Priest found out about that and thought that would be a good competitive way to compete in FFA, so actually winning state for it, and being the top four in the nation, the finalists, there's only four finalists in the nation for it, so it was a pretty big bit, pretty big deal just to be a finalist. We had a fancy luncheon at Nationals, and they told us that point. The chances of being a finalist is .0028, just to be a finalist, so not even winning. So it was a pretty big deal just to be a finalist, and then I actually won it. So that was a really big deal. But thanks to Ms. Priest for actually helping me practice for it. Since the beginning, the first day of school, we were talking about it. What are we going to do to try and win this? So we actually went and did it, and really appreciate her for all the help she's helped me with, so yeah, thank you.
Do you guys have any questions? Poultry judging, agriculture questions? I don't really know.
What are you guys doing with the funds that you win, the proceeds?
I didn't win anything, so I'm going to ask you that.
I plan, I'm putting it towards my equine aspect of my life, most likely, or in paying for college.
She takes care of her horses. Her horse, oh, that's what, is it saddles? I thought equine was horses.
So two of you are going to the U of A. Okay, what are the other, what are you going to do?
INWAC.
Yeah, we go to INWAC.
You're on that.
You know. Community.
That's right. Awesome.
They're both majoring in ag.
I'm going to do ag business.
Honestly, I'll probably go into poultry science when I go to the U of A. I'm just trying to save some money.
And you're a senior this year.
Yes, sir.
What are you going to do?
I'm going to put my money on law degree, trying to...
I would.
Oh, for college, oh. I'm going to go to Eastern Oklahoma, major in meat science, and I want to be a USDA inspector.
Maybe it was a family business, too, or?
Probably not.
No, okay.
But it did inspire me to go into the meats industry.
Good job.
Thank you.
Never a dull moment on those trips.
Ms. Priest asked me to, to listen and help script and provide support, and I was so enamored by Brayden's information about agrai processing, more than I had ever thought I would be, so congratulations to them. The next item, number four, we have an absolutely amazing media team, and Mr. Trent Jones leads that. If he'll come forward, please, he's got two things that he'd like to share. One little quick thing, I was asked to be, Hugh invited me to the very final part of the Ozark Media Film Festival. It took place just right around the corner. I was taken aback by the production that went on. He was fully, it was him and his team that put it on, and I, I felt like I was in some sort of, what was it, rock star production or something? It was amazing. So he's here to share some of the stuff that they're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, Dr. Rollins, board. Good evening. Tonight, I get the great privilege of discussing the Ozark Media Arts Festival with you and the Emmys. The Ozark Media Art Festival was started nine years ago, and the purpose was to connect education to industry in the areas of multimedia. So as a lot of us will remember, years ago, if you said, if your kid said to you, or if you said to your parents, "I want to be a filmmaker," they'd say, "Yeah, get out of here with that." And so, yet, films are critical, and storytelling is critical to our communities. So what we tried to do is we tried to create a competition, and the goal was to put education, industry, government in one place at one time to create sustainable infrastructure for employment. And we did that through competitions and workshops, and it exploded. Everybody fell in love with it. And it's free to enter, it's free to attend. We do it all through downtown Springdale. So there was 1,200 kids that attended this year from 41 programs around Arkansas and Oklahoma. And I was very happy to hear a lot of people say, "Why are there so many kids with cameras in our downtown?" I was like, "Yeah, those are our people." So we gave, we had 25 competitions, we had over 30 colleges, industries, vendors there. We gave away 81 awards, and it was really very special. We end the entire conference by doing a Teacher of the Year, and one of our Teachers of the Year from years ago from Salem Springs has a beautiful story about how multimedia helped her find confidence in herself personally, and find confidence in herself professionally. And so every year, she shares that story, and it just about brings everybody to tears. It's a beautiful experience. So the Ozark Media Art Festival is usually the third week of October every year. This year, it was the first week of October, but it's right in October. One more thing I'll say about that, one thing we're very proud of, is we try to integrate, as you know, we try to integrate students' abilities into measurable delivery, right? So one really cool thing we did this year was, we partnered with McCarty-Daniel, and they parked cars all throughout the downtown, and then we had kids as a competition go take photos of those cars in our downtown, and then we gave first, second, and third to those kids, but McCarty-Daniel got all of those photos. So now they have like a hyper-focused marketing campaign they can use to promote Springdale, and then our kids can say, "Look what we did, there's my work," and it gives validation both ways. So it's very proud, yeah. Next year will be year 10, so that's very exciting. Any questions about the Ozark Media Art Festival? So I hope you guys can come out next year. Dr. Rollins came this year, and we had a great time, I think, and just watching. It's so fun. Telling stories is fun.
Oh, my goodness. You just see kids, their, just their talents, their creativity, their networking. I mean, it was really quite an experience. Tell us how many kids were involved. You've told me, and I've forgotten, but it was hundreds and hundreds.
Yes, sir. We had, we had 1,200 that attended this year.
That's just amazing.
And this year, more than any year before, we made sure that we had activations all up and down Emma Street. So before, we kind of kept it in a close little quadrant. This time, we made sure it was in a lot of places, so a lot of people were like, "What This time, we made sure it was in a lot of places. So, a lot of people were like, "What is happening? Where did all these young people come from?"
And that happened to me. I was like driving up and down. I kept going, "There's kids running across, why is everybody not in school?" And then all of a sudden, I was like, "Wait a second, I know what's happening." So, and it was fun to watch them, just they, how excited they got.
Well, you think, you know, going back to our concept about Roots and how we connect to the community and all that stuff. So, what we're also doing there is all these kids from all these different cities all around the state of Arkansas are learning about our downtown and our school system and who we are. And, and so, it's really good, you know, it's just up and down the pipeline. It's a really good program, uh, for promoting our industry, promoting ourselves.
And the career piece is major.
Yes.
Many, many, many of these kids are genuinely looking at careers in, in media.
Absolutely. Yeah, as a matter of fact, there's a couple of studios that have opened here in North West Arkansas that are our former students. Uh, most of the employees have gone through our festival. And, uh, so, for example, the, um, kind of the flexing that we were able to do through this festival, last year we were hired to be the official marketing team for the Bentonville Film Festival. Uh, so, all of our young people were the ones producing the content on their social media channels. Uh, so that just really kind of shows that, you know, with the proper structure and the proper curating, you can deliver some really serious results. Um, and let me, let me transition, if that's okay, to the Emmys. I also wanted to mention the Emmys. Uh, this year, um, we, uh, the Springdale Schools, uh, was awarded seven out of 14, uh, Pillars of Excellence from the Mid-America Emmys. Very proud of that. The one that personally for me that was very important was One Day in Springdale, if you guys remember that. Um, I was very proud of that. Uh, if you haven't seen One Day in Springdale, we'll email you that film. It is so touching. Um, so we won seven out of 14 categories and that's from the Midwest. So, we're competing against, uh, a five-state region. Uh, that's our 10th consecutive year to be awarded an Emmy. And then, I'm very proud to announce that Travis Sherman's program at Harbor TV won a national Emmy for a story that he produced on Petty Gene. Uh, so I just think that is enormous, that the stories that he's telling and that we're telling here are being recognized on a national level. Any questions, board? Thank you. We've been together a long time and I appreciate the opportunity to tell our stories. Thank you. Thank you, Travis.
Truly is an amazing event. The next item, and if I could have Dr. Davis from Archer Learning Center come down. Um, I know you heard Dr. Rollins talk today about partners, partnerships, and we know that a lot of what happens at Archer is because of the great partnership that's been formed. And I'm gonna have Dr. Davis talk a little bit about the building dedication and about that partnership.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you all so much for being a part of our program. Um, we felt like it was amazing. Um, our students, especially our students and our teachers, just felt really honored that all of you were able to be there as well as so many other representatives from our district. I mean, we probably had 40 administrators from across the district that were there supporting our staff and our students and that just felt really good, um, as we opened that new space and we were able to dedicate that. Um, one of the greatest things that's happened from that is not only did we get to meet, I had not met Mr. John Archer before that day. And so, that was really great. And Dr. Rollins, uh, took us to lunch, so I even got to spend a little more time with him. But, his daughter Susan and I have been in touch even since then and she's going to be back in our school and partnering more. And so, there's a partnership that we're gonna continue on because of that program. And so, we're really excited about that. Um, I know I, I said thank you before and I know I've, every time I've been able to talk about our new space, I've said thank you for just the dedication that you have put into this space and just the innovation that we have, that we did not have before. There are things that are already happening this year that could not have happened last year where we were located. And I am truly thankful because I know that our kids deserve exactly what they have received and it has been amazing to be a part of it. Uh, we're still growing and figuring things out, but we are definitely thrilled to be there and excited about all the stuff to come. So, thank you so much. Yes.
Today in the School Board Work Session, we talked about one of our big audacious goals being the ACT and the, and the goals for achievement there. So, I've asked, uh, Mr. Fontenopoulos, our academic coach for Springdale Schools, to come forward and share that.
Hello, School Board. Hello, Dr. Rollins. Hi, Cynthia. Um, so, uh, this was kind of a neat moment for me as I came on as academic coach about three years ago because I had no idea what the ACT was, um, other than I knew what it was. But I didn't know how to teach it. I didn't know how to talk about it. I didn't know, um, what it could do for a student. And so, I certainly didn't know that it could go all the way down to the seventh grade and impact those kids too in the Duke TIP program that we do here at, uh, Springdale Public Schools. So, anyway, this has been the one that's really gotten my attention over the years, over the past two, two and a half years because, um, I've really just dove into it and, and I've really gotten used to it. Um, I enjoy talking about it because it kind of is like that old, it's a little bit of the old coaching world in me. I'm illuminating, um, I'm illuminating, uh, I wouldn't say an enemy, but an unknown to our players. And that is to say, many of them, I think, are just kind of carrying around a, um, oh, gosh, a folklore that the ACT is this tough thing. This, there's this old, you know, uh, tale that, I don't know what it is. And, and, and breaking that down for students over our district has been really fun. And I think we can see that it's also starting to kind of pay off. Um, and, and through our students' efforts, through our teachers' efforts, um, you're starting to see that. And by the way, I think we're seeing a theme here in just a second that I keep seeing throughout this entire meeting tonight, that these students at Springdale Public Schools can certainly respond, can certainly respond to just about everything that's put in front of them, from STEM to agriculture to, uh, getting ready for college, uh, to getting ready for the workforce, et cetera. So, I think that's cool. As you go down, uh, in your artifacts, I believe they start on page 38, 39. Is that right? I want to get to mine. Let's go to, yeah, let's go to page 40. And you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. Here you can see, um, just in, for instance, over to the left on page 40, you can see the graduation year of 2017. Uh, the total number of kids that are being tested. We're starting to see and, and hone in on those kids that do need to be tested all the way to 2019. And then you can go across the, you can go, you can go across the, um, the rest of that graph and you can start to see an increase. Whereas, the state itself is starting to, especially this year, the, this last year in 2019 is going backwards a little bit, not too much. But, we're increasing markedly over that, from 18.4 in English to 19.2. Mathematics is improving from 18, from 2018 to 19. Our reading skills have improved from 2018 to 19, from that 18.9 to 19.6. All the way over to the composite, you can see in 2018, we're at an 18.8 and now we're at a 19.5, where we're trying to get to that audacious goal of, of a 23. And so, uh, I, I, for, for me personally too, I want to keep an eye on the number of 32s. I think we're gonna start to see a little bit of an increase there. I think 32 might be the most powerful number in the ACT world. I, I think some kids are probably hung up on a, on a, on trying to get perfect, et cetera. But, 32 is powerful because that's Arkansas Distinguished Scholarship, that's the Arkansas Governor's Distinguished Scholarship. And you wouldn't, you wouldn't believe how many times I talk to a student or to a parent whose, whose, whose son or daughter is, "Well, I'm, I'm through taking the ACT." "Oh, what'd you get? 31." I'm like, "Oh, my gosh. Why?" Do you, do, and again, just the, just the people that don't know what the power of that 32 can do and that you're so eligible for the Arkansas Distinguished, uh, the Arkansas Governor's Distinguished Scholarship, which, um, normally will then take you to the University of Arkansas for a free ride. If, I don't know how else to say that. But, it's got, it's, it's, it's like getting a full ride scholarship, room, board, everything. And if a, and if a student takes advantage of that, you're looking at about close to $140,000. Uh, especially at that point, when you're given that scholarship, you're also going to be courted by the Arkansas, uh, Honors College because they don't want, they don't want you getting away from them either. So, it's just a win-win for everybody. And I want to keep up with that number over, I started catching that number last year, so I got a base. Now, I want to see what that number does this year in 2019, 20. So, if you have any questions, anything going on?
I've got a question. I noticed that the number of students taking the test was down just a little bit. What causes that to happen?
What causes that is students start to get placed with Accuplacer. They might take Accuplacer, they might find out that maybe taking the ACT isn't the best for them because it's a timed test and Accuplacer's not. And so, you might have, uh, students just go to their counselors and, uh, taking, taking that test as, as, as opposed to the ACT, which a lot of colleges and universities will accept your Accuplacer score. So, in some cases, it's getting the right test in front of the right student in that, in that regard. Here you see these pictures or just various pictures from around our district of, of either at the SOI, Harbor, uh, Hellstone Middle School, right there in the top left is, that's our Duke TIP seventh graders, uh, getting ready to, uh, take their ACT test in February. And then we've got summer bootcamps that take place and, um, which I'm looking forward to seeing some of those kids in our Duke TIP continue. They're, they're just, when you see a seventh grader shoot a 29, a 30, a 31 on the ACT, folks, that's incredible. That is cool stuff. So, anyway.
So, I carry around the stigma of the ACT. You know, so the last two years, you've come to my office for me to sign those awards.
Oh, that's the PSAT, the PSAT.
But anyway, my point is,
Yeah.
Your excitement and energy level over the last couple, three years has continued to, to increase. And I, I just want to applaud that because I don't know how excited I could be to get about talking about the ACT.
Well, again, it goes back to, and I, and I mean that, it, it goes back to, um, when I was a student in high school, I took the ACT my junior year in high school and I didn't know I took the ACT. There you go.
So, anyway, that's.
I didn't, I didn't even know I took it. And I mean that from the heart of my hearts. And so, um,
But I'm glad we've recognized that it's important for us
Absolutely.
To employ a position as, of what you do and that's
Thank you.
It's a great asset to our, to our school.
I appreciate this board and its support. And I appreciate Dr. Rollins and his staff as they support me, sending me out to places like Shawnee, Oklahoma to learn how to learn about the ACT. So, anyway, yeah. Good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna brag just a little bit on him. Every time I say, "What are your plans for today?" He's, "I'm, I'm out doing an ACT bootcamp. I'm out doing this." He's sending me pictures on Saturdays, all day long on Saturday. So, this is not just a normal job. He's working, uh, many, many hours to, for the students at Springdale. Um, at this time, if you look at item E, uh, I'd like to introduce Ms. Childress. Um, I just also want to say thank you. She's been an amazing asset to our district leadership team. She's bringing a wealth of knowledge from the field of elementary and from, um, being just out of a building. It's been, it's been great having her and I've been learning a ton from her. So, she, Ms. Childress, if you'll come forward.
Thank you and thank you, board. Um, tonight, I'm super excited to be able to introduce, um, Heather Cooper. And, um, she can go ahead and start coming this direction. You know, a recurring discussion for us is school culture and how important it is to have a positive school culture, that the, the work is hard and teachers work hard and put a lot of time and emotion into it. And, um, sometimes the results are high achievement, sometimes the results are just high growth, which is also a great thing. But, I have to tell you, every time I have a conversation with Ms. Cooper, she is talking about what wonderful teachers she has, how hard her teachers work, the amazing things they're doing. She, she herself is just, um, a burst of positive, positive culture. And so, um, not very long ago, she sent all of us, several of us, an email and she had gotten home one evening and gotten on social media. And, um, Facebook post after Facebook post after Facebook post of different teachers in her buildings, um, were pictures and comments about what a great job they have, how much they love their students, the amazing thing that their students are doing. So, um, that positive attitude, um, trickles down to her faculty, trickles down to her students. And so, we just wanted to give her some time tonight to talk to you about that.
Good evening, board. Dr. Rollins, thank you for the invite, Dr. Rollins. I'm super excited to be here tonight. Um, it was difficult to decide what to share because, um, it's not what I'm doing, but it's what these amazing teachers are doing. Six and seven hours a day, um, just the work is hard, but they work together and they have the most amazing students. So, I know that's their highlight. So, I've just kind of took a little snippet, kind of like I did in the email. And what I think is great and I wanted to share with you tonight, board, is that it wasn't like any one over-the-top project. This is just the great instruction, the wonderful learning that's taking place every day in the, in the classrooms at Parson Hills. And so, um, it just made my principal heart very proud that night. And I know Ms. Childress had asked us earlier in the year, "If you see great things in your building, you know, send Dr. Rollins a message, let him see that." And unfortunately, you know, we get busy taking care of kids and we just kind of forget. But, it really hit my heart that night when like post after post, I was just seeing all these great kids, kids smiling, kids learning, and these teachers being so positive about it. So, it's not my work, but their work that I wanted to share tonight. So, I just took a little snippet from every grade level. Oh, do I have the?
Yeah.
Oh, I did this one. Okay. Oh, one more. Okay, here we are. So, this is just an example. As you know, district-wide, we have a really strong push for literacy this year. And this just starting with our littlest of babies. They're working in math, but they, on graphing, but what are they integrating into that? And they're integrating literacy, they're counting the vowels in their names. So, it just shows the teachers and how creative they can get and how they're really pushing that literacy initiative, um, across all other subject areas. So, this is Ms. Carol and her babies. Um, also, one thing that we're really trying to do, as Ms. Childress talked about, culture is so important. And our students, they need us to celebrate them. And the teachers are really great at that each and every day. This is a kindergarten celebration after their first reading units of study. And you can tell how proud they are that they are readers. And so, um, they, um, paraded through the hall and it was exciting to see the fourth and fifth grade, um, students that were so excited for them and proud of them. Um, here's first grade, an example. We're just trying to increase engagement. And when kids are playing games, they don't even realize they're learning sometimes. So, this is an example of from first grade where they start with, um, learning foundational skills with a game. But then look how engaged they are when they're applying that in their writing and their writing units of study. So, um, again, just teachers being really creative about how they build the scaffolding and, um, get up to that, some more higher rigorous levels of learning. Um, second grade, um, I think we shared before with you, we have a, um, partnership with the AAW, with, um, the Walton Arts Center and its Arts with Education. They call it their AAW program. And they use a lot of drama to teach different things. So, they, these kids did lots of research. Um, they even made the landforms in dramatic activities. And then they got to share them with other students in another grade level. So, um, they love to share their work and I think that's part of the celebrating as well. And no better way to teach, to learn something than to teach someone else, right? And so, that's what they were doing here. Um, you can see their landforms in front of their research projects, though. Um, this is third grade. And this, I'm not only so proud of the, the students, but the teachers. So, as you know, we're all going through Roots, which is the, um, State Rise Initiative. And it's a lot of learning, I think these teachers would tell you. We're throwing them like all these plates and they're trying to spin them, but we never let them drop anything else, right? We're just adding to it. Um, and what these kiddos are working on today, these phonetic rules, is something that we haven't even received in our Roots training, but we're trying to front-load teachers and give them access to some of that. Um, and not only are we doing that, they're just jumping in. Like Ms. Martin here, she went to training this summer because she knew it was coming. So, it just shows their initiative, kind of how when you know better, you do better. And these teachers, they don't wait for somebody to bring it to them, they go out and find it. But, I was so excited about this post. This wasn't, some of these aren't the ones I shared with Dr. Rollins in the email, but some of them are. This was a new one. But, a teacher just sent me, um, this in the middle of the day because these kiddos wanted to stay in at recess and play this K-roll game. And so, they don't even know that they're learning, but they're so excited about, um, what they're doing. So, that teacher passion, it extends down to the students. Um, this, um, partnerships are really important to us. We're really trying to do more career-oriented, problem-based learning, um, real-life skills. So, this is a partnership with Apple Seeds. And our third grade students, Apple Seeds, actually, they bring the field trip to them. And they cook and they're reading recipes, they're measuring, they're doing math. So, integrating, again, lots of different content areas into one fun, exciting project. Um, and the neat thing about this is they get some of that food that they get to take home and get to do this with their family as well. So, it's extending the education into the home environment. Um, and parents were talking to me about it in the car line, so I know it meant a lot to them as well. Um, and then fourth grade, the most exciting part today, we brought a wonderful student, Mr. Ian True Love. And I'm gonna let his teachers, and this is one thing, I think, when you talk about culture, this makes me so proud. Um, Ms. Webb is his classroom teacher, but he goes, when we have ELD, our students that don't need ELD, English Language Development, they go to another class. And Ms. Martin is his teacher during that time period. We call it our non-ELD class. And then he also works with Mr. Ward, where he went, oh, Mr. Ward over here, who already saved us tonight. Love having East in the house. Um, and so, um, I'm gonna let them share. But, that pride, that, it's not Ms. Webb's student. He is our student. And we all, and when the power of teachers working together to support students, um, is amazing. And we definitely have that at our building. So, I'm gonna turn it over to them and let them share.
Um, like Ms. Cooper said, I am Ian's teaching for ELD, but I also have a small group of beginners. beginners that are learning ELD. So, I had to be creative with my, I have probably about 18 in my class that are non-ELD. So, one night I was brainstorming and I was just on my phone trying to go to sleep, but think. And I came across this program called CSFirst and it's a Google, Google sponsors it. But the, what I did was I can assign them a project to work on, but I needed them to be able to be independent. So, once I taught them the program, they're able to go in and there's different things that they can create with coding. And so, Ian has been brilliant because he has been able to come up with things that the other kids are just amazed by. And so, he is able to teach them what to do while I'm working with my small group. So, Ian's going to explain a little bit about his program. And we thought we'd be able to pull it up here, but Mr. Ward has his computer. So, he's, you can look at his game that he created.
My game is about, well, it's with this thing called Cartoon Network. It's a show on TV and it has kid shows on there. And so, they were characters, so I decided to make a game out of it. So, I took the Care Wizards and I brought them onto my screen. And then I just added like the coding, like, because I thought maybe this would be fun to people who don't know how to do this and maybe I could teach some people how. So, when I, when I put it on there and I put it all together, I was like, whoa, I didn't actually think this was going to work. And then so, when I showed all my friends, they were like, whoa, how'd you do that? I was like, I just watched some videos and I put stuff together. And then I figured out how to make like really cool games and stuff. So... Some troubles that I had was trying to make new levels on the game because when I tried to find the coding for that, there was nothing to work on there. So, I tried to put scores and timers. So, when I put the score on, I had to put different things and I had to take out some stuff so the score would work. And then I, Ms. Martin encouraged me to put a timer on there. And so, when I tried, I didn't have enough time and I ran out. So, I had to go back to class. And then...
That was today. So, he's still trying to add more things to it.
How long did it take you to make it, I mean, the first part happen?
Oh, it was like a week.
Well, I have, I, we switched classes. So, we have two non-ELD classes. And so, I already had a semester of one class. And so, the new semester was his class. So, he's, they've only been working on it a few weeks. So...
That's pretty cool. That was a lot of fun.
It's very engaging for them. They, Ms. Hobson came in to observe one day and she was very impressed that they were, they were engaged, that they weren't making any noises while I worked with my small group. So, it's a very engaging, and it's free.
That's really awesome. So, did you teach any of your friends how to, I mean, did they figure out how to do it?
Yeah, I had to show them like where all the coding is and like how to like put it all together and then make it as like one whole thing. Because they were already trying to make their own projects. And so, when I had to like show them that I made this game, they were, okay, okay. So, when I was working on my project, my friend came up and he was like, "Can I see your project?" I was like, "Uh, yeah, sure." And I showed him. And he was like, "Yo, how, how'd you make that?" And then I was like, "I just put a bunch of coding together and I watched videos and stuff. And then it just made a really cool game." So, he was like, "Can you help me?" I was like, "Uh, sure." And then I showed him.
You just sent a video of him doing it to them.
He, they have tutorials that they can go in and look at all the different how to program it, but it's, they still have to figure that out.
It's still have to code it.
It's, it's coding. Yes, absolutely.
And what grade are you in?
Fourth.
Fourth grade.
You know, you know you're really smart, right? That you can do that.
Very smart.
You are. I didn't even know how to play it, much less make it.
You're not even nervous about being up here?
No. He's not.
He wasn't scared, see?
You're doing awesome.
One level right now?
Yeah, but I'm still working on it.
I just want to beat a high scorer somewhere, too.
Are your parents here with you?
Here's one high score to beat 248.
248.
I wasn't there yet and I had to pass it down to Dr. Rollins.
Dr. Rollins may have 248 beat. I'm not sure.
I'm at 250 right now. We're, we're working hard.
That's awesome.
I think he broke it.
He did a great job.
Thank you. Very proud of you.
He did really good.
I have an idea, a way to put their names on them.
I'm almost at 300.
What they had left to back us is just so, it's a real world. When I went in and saw the kids, like Ms. Martin, she is doing for other groups and like they're helping each other. It's like the real world. When they get into a bind, they have to figure it out. And he's helped lots of other students, but I think it was, was it, when you didn't get it saved right, one time you lost some work, so he had to go back. And so, another student helped him with that. But they have to read and listen to those tutorials and figure it out. And the grit that it develops and them not getting frustrated and just being like, I'm done. Because if it was me, I would have been done a long time ago. But to see their tenacity and all the working together is really exciting.
I think a high scoreboard is a good addition.
That's awesome. Good job.
Figure that out.
Way to go.
Piece of cake for you.
Definitely not.
You can do it.
You can do it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Helping us with the technology. I put the link in, but I didn't realize that we couldn't. So, see, it's great to have smart people like Mr. Ward and Ian on your team, right? Just a couple last things we were going to share. This is just because I wanted to highlight every grade level. Fifth grade, they wrote personal narratives and then they went to Pixton.com and they were able to make it into comic strips. And so, again, just thinking creatively, getting it real-world, applying it to the career field. And so, kids are really excited about their stories. And then Mr. Ward is here to share about East.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. One of the great things that we do as East programs throughout Springdale is have our children, our students, have the opportunity to go to student trainings. The photos you see up here are from a video editing training we were at the last week on Thursday and Friday. It's amazing when you get to the University of Arkansas and you're surrounded by other Springdale East facilitators. This is a great way for our students to learn some skills, develop those skills, but it's also a great way for them to interact with other students and other facilitators within Springdale. Great opportunities, great experience, a great way for them to grow as students, as leaders, and as our future leaders of Springdale. It's a great opportunity. Love to have that opportunity. And that's one of the things that we really look forward to as East facilitators. So, thank you guys so much.
All right. Like I said, we just had a few minutes. And so, that's just a little snippet. But just wanted to see the everyday work going on and share that with you all. Any questions for us? All right. Thank you. And one more round of applause for Ian, our star.
Okay. I am honored to be able to introduce tonight's focus session. As you all know, Don Wetrick is one of the researchers and educational leaders that we have been learning from this year. And one of his six building blocks is daring. And so, daring is what we're going to be talking about tonight. We, we don't know what kind of future we are planning and preparing our students for, but we know whatever that future is, it's going to require them to be daring. And so, they're going to talk to you tonight about how they are working that way. So, Ms. Lindley, are you kicking it off?
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight, Dr. Rollins and Springdale School Board. We're excited to be able to participate in tonight's focus session. I was asked to remind you that you have cards that you can use to write any questions you have throughout the presentation. As you know, our goal in the Springdale School District is for each student to realize his or her potential or purpose. And we know that the world is interested not in what they know, but what they can do with their learning. And tonight, we are going to spend some time discussing what our students are doing with their learning from failure. And we believe this is a skill that will truly make them application-ready. We know that Wetrick has his six building blocks and daring is one of them. And he states that failure is a natural part of daring to learn and it's accomplished through trial and error. And when students know they can trust the teacher and that the teacher will not punish them for the trial and error learning, they really start to push the limits of meaningful projects. And I believe we've seen a lot of evidence of that tonight already. Our goal tonight is to give you some insight on how Tyson Elementary, Bay Area Elementary, Southwest Junior High, and Harbor High school all work to design learning experiences that push the limits of creativity and risk-taking so that our students learn to fail up. And so, we will start our first presentation with Shelley Pogue in Tyson Elementary School.
Dr. Rollins, Ms. Newman, School Board, and esteemed guests, thank you so much for the opportunity to share examples of how we dare to take risk in our strategies, be innovative in our thinking, and personalize our learning. Our students chose the topics tonight that they are going to present to you. They also wrote their own scripts with a little minor editing from us. But I thought that was powerful, that they took that ownership. And first, we will have Nayeli. We'll begin.
Good evening. My name is Nayeli Lemus and I am a fifth-grade East student. East is education accelerated by service and technology. The East experience empowers us to make a difference in our community. We are learning to shake hands, send emails, make phone calls, and connect with community partners. In East, we dare to own our learning. This class engages us and makes us want to come to school. East is student voice and choice.
Hello. My name is Devon Johnson and I'm an innovative fourth grader. At Tyson, we are daring when we take chances, trying new ways to solve problems and speak in front of people when we are nervous.
My name is Miller Waller. I am in third grade. We use these learned qualities to help us be in charge of our, of our learning. I am learning to be aware of myself, my actions, thoughts, strengths, weaknesses, and my next steps. At Tyson, we are determined. We are learning not to give up when we are faced with a challenge. As a reflective student, thinking about my learning helps me make the best move forward. Tyson Tigers are full of wonder. We have the desire to be curious about things. We are daring and aren't afraid to be innovative because we know that failing is an important part of learning.
I'm Raina Ariola. I use the learning qualities to help me succeed when I'm learning something new. I use the following qualities. Question, I find something that I'm curious of. Thinking, I find an idea, opinion, or belief about my question. Connect, I link knowledge and thinking together to create new understanding. Have a question for you to think about. Will you dare to learn something new during our presentation?
Hi. My name is Jace Challenger. This year, I've spent a lot of time in the learning pit. The learning pit is, the learning pit is a model we use to communicate where we are in the process of learning, learning a skill. Learning, the learning pit helps us have mindset strategies to use when we are stuck. I would rather get it wrong and learn from my mistakes than get it right every time.
I'm Alina Lastness. I have something that I would like you to think about, being daring. Do you go to school like Tyson, where failing forward, thinking outside the box, and learning from mistakes and encourage? I know that failing empowers me to learn. I dare to take risks to be self-aware about my learning and decisions and to stretch myself to really learn.
Hi. My name is Jeremy Gomez. We have two before-school options. One is networking class and the other is innovation class. The networking class is where we get to communicate, make new friends, and learn from each other. The innovation class, students have a choice of activity, activities like STEM, creative drawing, and games.
Hello. I'm Macy Brown. Soft start begin, soft starts begin at 7:45. We eat breakfast in our classroom and then have voice and choice and student, and student activities. The purpose of this class is to combine inquiry-based learning with social, emotional learning. We can use communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking skills each morning.
ELO stands for Action Learning Opportunity. When we participate in ELO, it gives us a chance to learn things that we're not very good at in school yet from other students. I'm a teacher for ELO group in subtraction. That means I use my daring skill to be brave and help other students learn about subtraction. Everyone is our school, everyone at our school is a teacher and everyone is a learner. Even our teachers have ELOs for each other.
Hello. My name is Miranda Keen. At our school, we have time devoted to passion projects. We choose a topic that we are passionate about and challenge ourselves to learn about it and create a project to showcase what we have learned. When I was in fourth grade, I learned about dreams and wrote a book about the meaning of dreams.
Last year's third-grade students realized that kids in our community books to read. We were passionate about making sure that our friends have access to books.
It is important that our friends have books to read because we learned that having books in our homes is the single best indicator of academic success.
So, we did something about it. We designed and built four Tyson-free libraries.
I believe that passion projects are important because we're allowed to learn deeply about a topic and learn to think for ourselves. In the real world, we aren't told exactly what to do. So, we need to learn how to choose what we want to learn about and do.
Thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. I would like to recognize any Tyson parents that are in the audience tonight. If you could just stand and let us, and grandparents, and yes, aunts. Thank you. Next, we will hear from Ms. Mulliken and the Bay Area Bears. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Rollins and School Board members. On behalf of Bay Area Elementary, we thank you for the opportunity for us to share how we have implemented the information that we've learned from Don Wetrick at his, at our Back to School event and from the book, Pure Genius. One of the new opportunities that we have provided for our students at Bay Area this year is implementation of school-wide club days. This isn't a new idea to Springdale schools. Secondary schools have been doing this for a while. However, we have implemented this school-wide for our students from kindergarten through fifth grade. Each grade level has a different club day and they have different choices. On those days, each grade level and those teachers have determined which choices and which clubs they want to create and participate in. So, teachers have created like an interest inventory and then students took a survey to determine which club that they would participate in. We have all hands on deck during this time. And we have our instructional assistants, instructional facilitators. We even have some of our front office ladies holding a club. And it allows our students to have that say and choice in their, in their learning. And in addition to the clubs, on the opposite days of when they don't have clubs, we have science, math, literacy, and just mentorship programs that are available for students to learn and have interventions at that time. Our clubs range from coloring club, yoga, short movie productions, coding, math gaming apps, all the way to dance and cheer clubs. Although, it's only a quick 20 minutes at the end of the day, it's a great way for our students to end their day with fun and having choice and ownership in their learning.
What club are you in?
I'm in computers.
So, what do you think about having clubs this year?
Well, I think clubs are a really great relief, kind of like an extra subject for the... the class because you have so many other subjects some of you don't want to do. But when you have multiple choice for the subject, such as clubs, you just kind of get that relief for doing what you wanted to do.
So why did you pick computers? What are you doing there?
Uh, it's, like I said, it is kind of like a relief. You just sit, talk, sometimes game, look, look at new games, try and see if you can play with each other on Powerline I O. It's just, it's kind of like, uh, sit, talk, uh, have fun type club.
What club are you in?
I'm in dance club.
Dance club? Why did you pick dance club?
Because I love to dance.
Yeah? What do you think about getting to have clubs at the end of the day?
Um, I think it's fun and, uh, it's kind of like a recess to me.
What do you think about the clubs this year?
I love them. I think they're fun for the kids. I think they get to meet new kids, make new friends, and I think they're having a great time.
So that is one way we have implemented the information that we have learned about giving students choice. Mrs. Peterson is now going to share how Bayari students start their day.
Hi, my name is Bridalyn Peterson. I'm a literacy instructional facilitator at Bayari Elementary. We have a lot of students that arrive at school very early in the morning and we wanted to make sure that that time was beneficial for our students. So I am passionate about innovation. So we talked and decided to start the STEM club. The STEM club is open to all students, kindergarten through 5th grade, every day from 7:20 to 7:45 in the morning. STEM helps the, foster the passion for inquisitiveness and innovation. STEM helps our students to develop those necessary 21st-century skills for learning, such as collaboration, being task-oriented, becoming risk-takers, fostering creativity, reflection, communication, and critical thinking. The club is engaging and motivates students to think through real-world scenario problems. The students are given no direction or boundaries for what they are allowed to create or explore. I would now like to introduce you to Isaiah Largispada, one of our 5th graders. Isaiah started out the year helping kindergarten through 2nd graders become risk-takers and problem-seekers. Now that our K T U is up and running, Isaiah has joined the 3rd through 5th graders on their STEM journey. I will let him tell you about his experience with the STEM club.
Hello, sorry. Hello, everyone. My name is Isaiah Largispada and I go to Bayari Elementary School. STEM is a really cool program that I participate in every single morning. STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics. STEM has showed me that, STEM has shown me that my classmates and little kids have a lot of imagination. When I see the little kids create, I'm like, wow. I really like that Bayari did the STEM club this year because it allows me to be creative and take risk. Through the STEM club, I have learned to be patient, how to communicate with others, problem-solving, and learning from my mistakes. I have learned that life doesn't always go, go the way you want it to and you have to cooperate with each other. When I am home, I look for things that will be helpful for STEM club. Like my friend Julian brought his foosball table and we tried different materials for the ball. We learned that a, a round-smooth sphere travels the farthest. And we tested a bouncy ball, but that didn't work. It had too much grip on it. I like creating new things with my STEM materials that we have. We learn from each other and from our mistakes. Thank you for your time.
In closing, I'd like to say that our STEM club has been granted a $500 donation from a local engineering company in Fayetteville. We're excited about this partnership with Garver USA. We are now working on setting up a mentorship program between their employees and our students to occur during the morning STEM time.
Are your parents here tonight?
His mother is here. She's right over by the door. I will now turn it over to Southwest so they can share how they're brave enough to risk failure.
At Southwest, we do want to create learning opportunities where students will learn to be brave enough to risk failure. Tonight, we have 9th grade student representatives here from Southwest Junior High and 10th grade student representatives from Harbor. Both these students, students, sorry. Well, the 9th graders will speak to the challenges they are experiencing at Southwest Junior High and the 10th graders will speak to how these challenges have prepared them for high school. These students represent a group of teens who are daring enough to risk failure and accept the challenges of using failure to grow. All of these students have been involved in many activities, but the three we will spotlight are AP Human Geography because Advanced Placement Human Geography is the first time these students face a college-level course. And they do this as 9th graders. Of the 24 students who participated last year in AP Geograph, AP Human Geography, 6 scored a 5, 8 scored a 4, and 6 scored a 3, which means that 83% of the students in the course received their first college credit as 9th graders. These students also scored above the nation and the state in all seven measurement categories. Several of these students are also involved in robotics and East as well as many other extracurricular activities. We have prepared some questions for these students to have them explain how they are learning to be daring enough to learn from failure. And students, before you answer the question, be sure and introduce yourself, okay? So let's start with Mackenzie. Mackenzie, go ahead and we'll let Mackenzie move in here. Mackenzie, share with us how you have worked through the challenges last year to experience the success of receiving college credit as a 9th grader? And tell us what you learned about yourself from this experience.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Brown. I'm involved in debate at Harbor as well. I'm on color guard and with the band, and I'm also in theater. So what I've, I took AP Human last year. I passed with a 4, which was super exciting and it was pretty cool. So there were a lot of challenges in that class. It was definitely one of the hardest classes I had to take up at to that point and it definitely helped prepare me for high school. I guess one of the biggest challenges I had to overcome was getting my first test grade back and it being not what I was used to. And it was kind of discouraging at the moment, but then going over it in class and seeing that everyone had a rough time with that test was really encouraging and allowed me to continue and persevere and just like keep studying and studying harder and like it definitely improved my work ethic because I wanted the better grades and I definitely had to work for them. So when I found out I had passed with a 4, it was really, really encouraging knowing that everything I had done had paid off and I had actually, you know, achieved what I was in that class to do. But that class has done so much more for me than just college credit. It still affects me to this day. I can apply it everywhere in all my classes, all the time. And for me, it just helped, it definitely improved my work, work ethic. And as a person, it just encouraged me a lot and like the fact that I did pass helped me know that AP classes aren't as scary as they're made out to be and it's possible to pass. And it just was really encouraging with all of that.
Okay, Hayley, I'm going to go to you and ask you, how did Ms. Spears encourage you to reflect on your learning and give feedback to each other through their learning process?
I'm Hayley Kirk. I'm one of those people that crazily scored a 5 after hard, hard work. I'm in the band, I'm in debate at Harbor High School, and, but to go on with your question, I think the most important part of learning and reflecting on our work was our teacher relationship. Ms. Spears had a relationship with each student and so you were getting encouragement from someone that you actually liked, that you wanted to talk to, and someone you respected. And I think that was really important. But also, in class, after every test, no matter how bad the score was, we had to go over it and do test corrections. And with test corrections, it wasn't just like she didn't tell us the answer. We had to go back in our reading and our notes and really look for the answer. And we did lots of bootcamps, we were in there for primetimes a lot. It was a lot of hard work, but again, like Mackenzie said, it really paid off in the end and it encouraged us to move on with other AP classes and get on track.
Okay, so Hayley, you are in East Robotics and Debate. How did these activities foster your creativity and development beyond just earning a grade?
Hello, I'm Hayley Greer. Like Ms. Lindley said, I'm in East Robotics and Debate at Harbor. These classes really allowed me to get on the more creative side of school and it really helped me improve skills like public speaking, knowing what to say and how to say it. And it's really allowed me to think outside the box and truly figure out different ways of how to solve problems within our school and community as a whole.
So that was our three former Southwest students. Now, we're going to move on to our current Southwest students. Lizzie, how have you learned from failure and how are you learning from failure through your preparation in AP HUG?
Hi, I'm Lizzie Soul. I participate in volleyball, AP HUG, and choir. Yeah, that's about it. So I've learned through failure a lot, just at the beginning of this year. So I worked through failure by participating in primetime and engaging in conversation and asking questions and really talking with Ms. Spears about how I can fix my grades. And I've learned a lot about myself as a, as a learner and how best I learn and so I can fix, you know, my mistakes and yeah, do better next time.
So James, can you share with us some ways that you have learned from failure through your participation in robotics?
My name is James. I go to Southwest Junior High, as you can see, but I am in robotics, cross-country, band, and I am a football manager for the Southwest 9th grade team. The ways that I've learned from failure in robotics is like saying robotics competitions without failures, like rain without water, you can't really have them. We were invited to state last year and I believe our team made it, and made it 3rd, but it came with a lot of failure and just seeing how we can come through that and, and still come up on top just really makes me think that anybody can.
So Luis, how are you working through challenges to experience success this year in AP HUG?
Hi, my name is Luis, as you heard. I'm in band, cross-country, and AP HUG, as you heard, and all that jazz. I feel like AP HUG has really like challenged me this whole year because it puts me through a college course, which you know, I'm not supposed to be there, but I am. And I feel like it really pushes me to be the best that I can be because it wants, it forces me to get high grades and things like that. Because my first test, I didn't do so great, 63. I was like, let's go. I passed, at least, which, and it made me want to study more and for the next test, get a higher grade. And my mom really also pressured me to get better because she saw that it was like an 80 and she was like, I want you to get an A. And I was like, okay. And it pushed me and I feel like setting goals for myself also helped me a lot to work towards those goals, yeah.
So Alexei, how is being in robotics and East fostering your creativity and development?
Hi, as she mentioned, my name is Alexei. I'm in robotics, cross-country, yearbook, and band. Robotics has helped foster my creativity and because like I'm the head or just basically the only coder in robotics right now, there are some learning to code better, but I'm the main coder for our competition robot. And so, we also, we have to like problem-solve and create new robot designs, so we have to learn to be really creative with our designs so that it doesn't look like another team so we can actually have a unique robot and, and get an award in competitions and score higher places with a better design. It also helps with problem-solving and figuring out what's wrong with the code. Like if there's an error, I would need to figure out why it's doing that and how to fix it.
And our last one is Alyssa. And Alyssa, we know that there's a big push to bring more female representation into STEM activities. And you are an active member in East and Robotics. And so, what are you learning most about yourself from your experiences and how do you see these organizations working to promote female participation?
Hi, I'm Alyssa. Like Ms. Lindley said, I participate in AP HUG and I participate in East and Robotics. And what I've learned about myself through these experiences is that I am very much a people person. I love helping people. I love being engaged in conversation and just knowing what's going on. But above all that, I've learned that I really like to learn and actually know what's going on and not just kind of be oblivious. But also, I see that STEM is very much a stereotypical male-prominent area in workforce and in schools. And so, what I've kind of taken from that is that through these experiences, I've learned to find my voice and stand up for what I believe in and what I think. So if we have an error with a robot, or if we have something or a project going wrong in East, I have found myself confident enough to state why I think it's happening and what I think we can do to fix it. And so, what I, I feel like girls who are confident enough to put themselves out there and be a part of more STEM activities, I feel that they will find themselves more confident to say what they believe and not let guys like think that we're just a whole bunch of dumb blondes.
So we would like to thank our students for sharing their experiences with us tonight. And we'd like to thank Ms. Spears and Ms. Johnson, who are in the audience. They dedicate a lot of time and support to our students and make them able to succeed. And we have a couple of parents in the room as well, and so we'd like to thank you because obviously, students are successful because of what you do. And at this time, Dr. Greep will close our program with information from Harbor High School.
Dr. Rollins, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity tonight to share with you some, some experiences and stories about Harbor High School. As you know, the life of a high school student is extremely busy. Students are focused on their academics, they're focused on extracurricular activities, they're working. All of these things, they're, they're focused on their future and that's what we teach them and those are great things. So when you find young people who not only excel in those areas, but also have the heart and the passion and the time to give back to others, it creates a pause. And tonight, I'd like to share the story of two Harbor High School students. Eric Soto is a senior at Harbor High School and Jax Nally is a junior. At the conclusion of this video, I've invited Mr. Soto to provide a few comments about their experience with Arkansas United.
In a time of division within our country, two of our students from the Springdale Public School System have taken the initiative to advocate for equal immigrant rights throughout the entirety of Arkansas. Arkansas United is a nonprofit organization and is given essential services such as legal services. It's advocating for the best rights, equal rights for the immigrant community.
So I was a volunteer intern at Arkansas United. I actually specialized in the legal department of the organization, which means like when people would come in for their appointments for things like DACA, citizenship, TPS, all those sorts of like immigration, legal processes, I would sit down with them and help them work through their applications. And I'm also on a thing called the Arkansas United Youth Council, which is a group that works to implement solutions for youth in our schools and get youth more involved in politics.
The movement that has been generated... The movement that has been generated the last couple of years by the Dreamers through the young leaders is very important. Because they came here young, this is the only place that they know. And they want to study. They want to carry on and have that right. With over 50% of the student body at Harbor High School represented by minorities, the work that Eric and Jax do on a daily basis at Arkansas United is crucial to the growth of the Springdale Public School System. And for student leader Eric Soto, a more personal motivation.
With Arkansas United, I was able to find a connection there because my mom, she was separated from me, and she still is, and she might not be here when I graduate. And I want to help others be together with their families and, you know, find them together. And maybe those who don't have a legal status here, find a way, a path to citizenship.
I loved being part of that work of, you know, lifting others up and making them feel like they were, like they belonged in our community and like they were wanted.
They are marvelous. I call them my favorite leaders. When I see Jax and when I see Eric working together, it makes me have hope, have a lot of hope in society, and that the near future is going to be good. If we have more leaders like Jax and Eric, surely our future is going to be great. With an estimated 48% being a minority in Springdale, Arkansas, Jax and Eric have the very simple but inspirational message.
Never give up, to always continue doing what they do, and that no obstacle is too big for them, and anything can be possible if you are determined.
I just want these students to know like that they can do the things that everyone else does. Like just because they have like the status of being an immigrant doesn't mean that they can't go to college, doesn't mean that they can't get a job, doesn't mean that they can't belong in this country just like everyone else. They have, you know, the opportunity to make a change and to be a leader if they choose to do so.
In the words of Athletic Director Wayne Stellic, "We are many schools, but one community." And the progressive work that Jax and Eric have accomplished is making progress towards a more equal society. For HBWN, I'm Sam Lewandowski.
So my name is Eric Soto. I'm a senior at Harbor High School. I wanted to thank the school board and Dr. Greep for being supportive in creating a school system where every student feels included. I think that from my elementary to my high school, I've always, I don't think I've had a day where I don't feel included every day going into a class or school. I feel like I'm part of a family. And the idea of the DACA presentations and helping other students who get them informed that they have rights, even though they may not have a legal status. The idea came after we had our registration drives, voter registration drives during the month of September. I know we had one at Harbor, and then Dr. Davis, we had one at Archer Learning Center. And so then we thought, not everyone at Harbor can vote because, you know, you have to be a US citizen to vote, or... So then we didn't want them to feel excluded or feel like they weren't welcomed. And so we made the presentation during primetime where we informed them about their rights and then where we helped them. We answered their questions. We had Iris Beth, she's from Arkansas United, who was there as well, to answer any questions that they may have about their legal status. I think one of the biggest rewards of doing this is, you know, just hearing students coming up to us and saying, "Thank you for informing us." There was just one student who said, "My, thank you because my parents thought that because they don't have a legal status here, they didn't have any rights." And so when they say that, I kind of feel happy inside because it makes me, you know, it makes me happy for them because they will bring that to their families and they won't just keep it with them. So I want to thank you all for supporting us.
On behalf of the four schools tonight, thank you for the opportunity to share our stories and to really showcase our young people. Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, it's been my privilege to say for a long time that the Springdale School District is growing in prominence at the state and national level. I think tonight, Debbie, we could add international level as well, and our students and staff are leading the way. That's a beautiful thing, and I know it pleases each of you, certainly as it does me. I want to thank the board as well. As you look at the next items on the agenda, we had the privilege to talk about some of them today. The board's been very involved, participating in meetings at locally and at the regional level. We're getting ready to attend our state ASBA meeting, where again, the board will be a part of that program. So congratulations to each of you. I'm very, very proud of you. In terms of the ASBA trip, which will be December 11, 12, and 13, I plan to leave here about 7:30 in the morning. And if those of you who would like to go with me would look at your schedule, and we can go down together and then return on Friday after the conference is over. So again, I'll just wait to hear from you. We don't need to process that tonight. I'll leave on the 11th about 7:30 in the morning. And I think all of our conference schedules start at 1:00, as I understand. So we can look at that and double check, but that's, I believe that's the way you're registered. We talked a little bit today about your participation in the ASBA regional meeting at Gravett High School a few weeks ago. Really a good meeting, I thought, well orchestrated. There was an opportunity for a lot of learning on everyone's part. And then with members of the team followed up with a leadership meeting here in Fayetteville just a few days ago. So again, you've been very busy. I'm very proud of each of you, and I thank you for your willingness to continue to learn and be a part of the initiatives that are going on in the district today. Any questions, Mr. President? I know we had a full work session today, and I appreciate the time that we had to talk together about the issues of the day and opportunities to learn and get better. Very good. Good deal. Well, thank you again, board. I appreciate it very much. Mr. President, you want to stretch and take a break, or shall we proceed? Go forward. Thank you again, board.
He went through all that pretty quickly. Okay. I won't keep you too long. First thing I want to tell you about is something really cool that happened this last week. Tyson partnered with us just out of the blue and gave away about 40,000 pounds of, it's my understanding, 40,000 pounds of chicken, a new kind of patty that they provided to our families. And they did it within an hour and a half. All went through Shawna Lyon's office, and who else was up? Chris Deckline was involved in that and some others. So we're real, Ms. Godinay, I think, really orchestrating the whole thing. So we're proud of them and thankful to Tyson. Tyson Foods seems to always step up, even when we're not even asking for it or looking for it. They just show up, and they're such great partners. So that happened, and I wanted you to know that. So in case anybody out in the public says, "Hey, we got some chicken," well, now you know. Okay, in regard to construction, the baseball and softball complexes, we have our last meeting. I think I meet with Wayne and Kevin and some others on Thursday morning. And we're going to make sure all our wind screens and caps for our fencing and everything is completely ordered. We'll have those in. And hopefully, after Christmas, you'll see some completed ballfields. What you won't see is you won't see locker rooms, but we're working on pricing. And I think you've seen the footprint of what those might look like, locker rooms at Springdale High and at Harbor. We're going forward with those. Dr. Rollins hasn't sharpened his pencil to the point yet. He's told me a final cost, but I know that it'll, whatever it is, it's half, right? Whatever the cost is, it'll be half. So we're looking at having those done, and we'll begin construction on those locker rooms in spring. So excited about that. We're folding those in in our master plan into the current project of baseball, softball. So that's how we're doing it. We're just finishing that out. In regard to Harbor Wrestling, Dance, and Cheer, that's moving quite further along. I think Dr. Rollins finally settled on the corner, adding to the auxiliary facility that's over there. So we're pricing those, that by square foot, and looking at particular views of how to look. He'll, or I will, show it to you at some point for looks. Absolutely. He's not... Yeah. Harbor Dance, Cheer, and Wrestling, we are moving forward. Great guns. Though right now, we just want to make sure that it can fold into the facility and look good. Oh, I'm sorry if I caused any... We probably won't be started on that until the summer. We have a lot of hoops to jump through. And certainly, you'll have opportunity for significant feedback on the look of that thing. So we're just moving forward. Great news, the IT building is finished. It looks good. If you've been over across through there, it folds right in with Parsons Stadium. Dr. Rollins and I went through it the other day. I think I sent some videos. Yeah, yeah, it looks really good. Yeah, it's really cool. Mr. Miller told me tonight he's still working with AT&amp;T to finally get all of his attachments through there. And it's really a district project, and it's very important. We can't mess that up because connectivity today, if you don't have it, you're just, you're dead in the water. So he's working on that. He can give you an update, but I can just tell you that he's working with AT&amp;T, and he's applying pressure where pressure's needed. Well, there are two. The one immediately behind is the warehouse. So it's already up in use. He's already got it full. Dr. Rollins and I were in that the other day as well, and we have carts and things.
Warehouse for the IT?
IT. I think they got their forklift, got it? Yeah. And they got a used forklift from Yale for about $14,000. It's electric, it's really good. It's about a $40,000 or $1,000 piece machinery, got it for 14, I think. They did really well in that selection. And then finally, the third building is the laundry. We've had some issues. We've worked, we were going to try to expand that facility, but in expanding it, it meant that we had to do a lot of paving, some rerouting of some lines, a lot of extra things. And so we just elected for time, expediency. We'll work within the confines of the walls that are already there. Grandfathered in with a lot of the codes, and our guys did every stitch of the work. So we poured risers, we've set the washers and dryers, and Department of Health, I think, has already given their blessing on that, have lint traps and some other things that has to go in there. Our laundry's a big deal, folks. It would cost us over $6,000 a week to do what those ladies do to go with Cintas. In fact, it might have even been pushing more, more like $9,000 a week. So we really didn't have a choice but to push forward and push forward hard to make sure that facility's in use. So I'm excited about it. Some work that you might hear around the district, we had some HVAC issues over at Joe Kelly. We had 14 heat exchangers go out. It was more reasonable to go ahead and change out the... Huh? Well, what they did is they went through before they fired them up to check the heat exchangers, and if there are holes or any kind of damage to the heat exchangers, over time, you know, when a unit's 15, 16, 17 years old, it's going to be just as expensive to change those heat exchangers, and you still have an old unit. So we just elected to put new units on there, and you have to get a crane to do it. So we're going through that process right now. So you might hear that out. Ms. Ford has let us know she's cold, and that... So we've provided... Yeah. So we've provided her some temporary heat over there, and we'll get that done. But as soon as those heat exchangers or those new units are in, they'll be fired up, cooking with gas, as they say, and they'll be in good shape. Finally, I provided you a packet of SOI Phase II. I really enjoy Dell Scarborough's field reports. They're really thorough, really good, and I think gives you a really nice, neat look at the construction. I hope you enjoy them. If you don't, let me know, and I'll stop force-feeding them to you. But as of right now, Phase II looks really, really good. We're pleased with it. There's a little hiccup. You know where the current gym attaches to the new facility? We had a little water leakage that's come through, and we've got it repaired, but it did do a little bit of damage to our floor. So Baldwin and Shell Insurance, I believe, is going to take care of that and replace the floor that's messed up. So it is a hiccup, and it's just nothing we can do about it except prepare it and move on. Yes, sir? Upstairs is in great shape. I say great shape, as good a shape as it can be unless you gutted it and redid it. Downstairs is not, Mr. Hudson. That, what would be the western, northwestern corner, has some leaking, and it continues to do so. It's molded and mildewed and things. We're having that remedied. We did test the air quality. The air quality was okay. It wasn't great. So since no one's down there except for Chris Deckline and Robert Ferguson, we, no, we've asked them, they probably, yeah, we've asked them, they probably need to move. And so I think Chris is going to go upstairs. We haven't, we don't have a solution for Dr. Ferguson just yet, but we're working on that. He just has so much stuff, bicycles and things like that. We are going to have the mold taken out. I mean, that's what it is, mildew. And I think the estimate was around $5,000 or $6,000 to get it all out, cleaned up, and tested, so. Well, if you'll recall, years ago, they tried to repurpose the basement. The basement had floor drains, and they would pump the water out. Those drains were capped. And the reason why we're having so much of that trouble, no place for the water to go. So the water sets. So our best thinking right now, unless you want to spend literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, is to reopen the drains, vacate the bottom, maybe use it for some storage, but not house people. That's our best move right now. Other than that, that's a full report unless you have additional questions. Yes, sir. That's Arkansas. Yeah. Thank you for your time today. I really appreciate your input. It helped us a lot. Appreciate it.
Good evening. You'll see in your packet that tonight you have several transfers that are seeking your approval. There are five students wanting to come into the district from Fayetteville, one student wanting to come in from Rogers, and two students that are requesting to be transferred to Farmington. Those two students have never been in our district. They have been homeschooled, moved to a different area that they were under the impression it was in the Farmington School District. And they also have step siblings that they spend 50% of their time with that attend Farmington. So your past practice has been to allow those siblings to stay together and attend a school district together. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve the transfers listed in your materials. Thank you.
Good evening, board and Dr. Rollins. I have two items for you this evening. The first, we have two resolutions. I think it'd be all right just to act on those together. We have two companies that we need to disclose in an open board meeting because it's a related party situation. The first one, I'll just, I don't know which one y'all had... The first one, I'll just, I don't know which one y'all had first, but let's say Alicia's Printing. And Alicia's Printing is owned by Alicia Watson. Both Alicia Watson and her husband, Robert Allen Watson II, are employees of the Springdale School District. And so, we would only do business with them in the event that we take competitive bids and they are the low bidder. The second item, or the second one to disclose is El Chafi Catering, or Chefi? I don't know exactly how you say it. It's owned by Maria Vasquez, and Ms. Vasquez is an employee of the district as well. And so, once again, it would be in a situation where it was in the best interest of the district to do so. But because these are related parties, we do need to disclose these relationships in an open board meeting, and the board needs to pass a resolution in order for us to be able to do any business with them. Be happy to answer any questions for you.
Second.
To have a motion by Mr. Hudson and second by Mr. Lewis, I believe. Yep. To approve a resolution as stated, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. And the second item I have for you is the October 2019 financial reports. As you can see, both on our revenue summary and on our expenditure summary, we are right there in line with where we were last year, so I'm feeling really good about it. Don't have anything specific to point out, but if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try and answer those. If not...
To accept the financials as presented, all those in favor?
Thank you so much.
Cory?
Good evening. Good to be here with you all tonight. I have some really exciting news from SEA to share with you all. Two weeks ago, we sent 10 delegates to Little Rock for AEA's Representative Assembly. At the Representative Assembly, we set our organization's priorities by votes of credential delegate members. This is our primary legislative and policymaking body of the Arkansas Education Association, and it derives its powers from and is responsible to the membership that RA is. During the RA, awards are also given to local associations, and I'm so excited to share that SEA won first place in numerical membership increase for the state. So, we're really excited about that. We were just surprised, and we won a cash prize that we're excited to use to invest in our teachers. So our zone, which is Fayetteville, Huntsville, Bentonville, Rogers, Farmington, also won the Zone Membership Award as well. During the RA, AEA also hosts a statewide professional development conference that Friday, and Chris Pearson and Janelle Harp, who is the counselor at Sonora Elementary, presented their trauma training to educators all across Arkansas at that professional development conference, and it went over very well. So, I'm just excited to say that Springdale had some great educators representing us in Little Rock that weekend. Chris and Janelle also did their trauma training last week at Parson Hills, and they're planning to host another one at Tyson Elementary on Thursday, but they've had to change the date, so they will be hosting another one. Several teachers have been signing up for these trainings, and I've heard lots of positive feedback. And we're just excited and grateful to have this partnership with the district so that we can ensure that our educators have the tools that they need to serve our students who come from trauma, so...
So is Chris still in transition?
Well, Chris has started her new job, but she's, she is coming back and helping us with this because she's just, she's very passionate about it and has such a big heart.
Does her, is there a replacement?
We don't have a replacement for her yet. There will be, but we don't know when or who it will be, so, yeah. Trying to. Yeah. So, it's been fun. We miss Chris a lot, but it's really nice to have someone who's very passionate and still wants to come back and volunteer her time to help with this, so, yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you, Cory. President concludes our agenda.